Understood. Individually, everybody's justice for all.
Okay. Okay. Roll call, Jack. Mr. Erhur?
Here.
Tammy Blaine?
Here.
Cindy Brode?
Here.
Julia Marky-Puker?
Present.
Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Kerr?
Present.
Dr. Rick?
Here.
Dr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Fro.
Here. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Um, I do not have a board message, um, so we're down to public comment. Uh, Katie Abel Thomas, you have some public comment. Please use the microphone for the, for the new folks is not so much so that we can hear you. It's for the people online that, that can hear you. Yeah.
They won't make any difference.
Oh, okay.
Just talk to them.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. My name is Katie Abel Thomas. I know, um, several of you or I've reached out to you via email, um, ahead of today's board meeting. I grew up here in Indiana. I spent my whole life here. I graduated from Indiana area school district in two thousand and five, and I now have a seven-year-old daughter that goes to this very building. Um, I love this district. I love our schools. I am so, so happy with the experience that she has had here. Every morning I drop off, um, my daughter and my niece in the drop-off line here at East Pike and, um, two little girls that seem so grown up to me in the car when they're telling me to turn on a certain song or how to do everything, start to look so little as they walk away into this big building. Um, the teachers here are amazing. The staff here is amazing. I'm here today to ask that you, um, vote in favor of putting armed security guards in our elementary schools, um, for that reason, because I believe that the children at this elementary school and the other elementary schools in our district deserve that. Um, those are security measures that the district found necessary several years ago for the senior and junior high. I believe that putting security guards in the elementary school would not only increase the, uh, district's ability to respond to an active shooter scenario, but also likely deter a lot of other negative behaviors that, um, we know happen in, in all elementary schools in every district. Um, in the discussions that I've had with taxpayers and teachers and non-teachers and parents and non-parents and basically everybody I've encountered over the last couple of months that I've brought this up to, not one person has said they wouldn't pay another ten to twenty to thirty dollars a year in taxes, um, to have security in our schools. Um, everybody I've spoken to in law enforcement, and in fact, I did, uh, meet with Chief Shaw and discuss the contract with the Borough Police with him, which I think is lovely. It's wonderful. I love seeing the Borough Police and Axel here in the morning and in the afternoon. I think it encourages a positive relationship between the children um, and law enforcement. However, Chief Shaw was very clear in that meeting that that contract is not in lieu of school security and that it's not mutually exclusive with um, armed security guards in the elementaries. Um, he said as a father, a taxpayer and a, um, police chief, he would support law enforcement, or I'm sorry, the security guards in the elementary. So I know that that contract has been pointed to quite a bit, and while I do support it, I don't want it to be, um, looked at as something that can take the place of security guards. And the last comment I make, I guess, is just that obviously finances are an issue. Um, the economy has put a lot of people in a really difficult position over the course of the last couple of years. However, I think if we found ourselves in the situation where somebody did come into one of our, our elementary schools and we did not have an armed security guard here to at least attempt to respond to it, the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year would start to look like a drop in the bucket to all of us. I don't know how many of you have had to call nine-one-one in your lives or who have, um, had that, oh, I never thought this would happen to me, um, situation happen to them, but when it does happen to you, um, there's no going back from it. So I would just urge you to, um, think about that when you're casting your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, Adam Thomas?
Hi, good evening. Um, my name's Adam Thomas. I have a seven-year-old daughter in, here in East Pike Elementary. I'm Katie's husband. Um, I'm also a sergeant with the Pennsylvania State Police. I've been with the Pennsylvania State Police for, um, eighteen years in various roles. Um, I'm here today to ask you to vote in favor of, uh, security in the elementary schools. Um, I have no skin in the game, like I said to you before. Um, I believe that this will cut down on response time. Um, I think that the contract with the Borough Police to have them here in the morning and in the evening is, or in the pickup line is a good thing. However, that doesn't cover the six to eight hours, you know, uh, during the school day that, um, people are most susceptible to an active shooter. Uh, between three and seven minutes is the response time, uh, to the police department, uh, for a police department to an active shooter type situation. You're gonna get the nine-one-one calls that come over to the, uh, nine-one-one center. They're gonna have to be transferred to the state police. It's gonna be an all-hands-on-deck type situation where everybody's responding, Borough Police, County Sheriff, State Police, all at once. You're gonna have a three to seven-minute window, people getting here. Um, anybody that comes into this building, um, I mean, I just noticed the door out front. There's a glass door. I mean, I, I, I know locked doors are a good thing and I appreciate that, but there's always security measure, measures that are broken, um, when an active shooter enters a building. The elementary schools aren't gonna get the active shooter from the kids. They're gonna get it from the outside. Somebody can see this is a soft target. Somebody's gonna know that, that this is a high, um, casualty-type situation. Somebody comes in here with a high-powered weapon, they're gonna eliminate kids. Nobody's gonna be running towards that. The only people running towards that are coming from the outside, from the borough, from the sheriff's office, from the state police. I ask that you vote this in because there's gonna be one person at least to give these kids a chance in the building to be running towards this person, should that, God forbid, that situation ever come. Um, I don't want that to ever happen when my, when my daughter's here and the other children that, you know, in, in, in the district. And I think that it's a, a, a simple thing that can have a chance of these kids having a chance, should that type of situation, um, um, happen. Um, the, the, the cost really is a, a, a miniscule thing, I think. Um, I don't think it's a big deal for taxpayers to be, you know, there's other, other projects that are, are, are bigger, larger scale, and I think this is important to, uh, for the safety of the children. Um, like I said, I have no skin in the game. I have no, this isn't for my friends. This isn't for, I know a lot of people say, well, security is a lot of retired PSP guys, a lot of retired police officers. Um, that while that is true, I believe in that. I think it's a good thing. I think those people are well-trained. I think those people are required to keep up with certifications, to keep their, their license to do this type of, 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 uh, employment. And, um, I just think it's an important thing. Um, when you have somebody running, when you have somebody coming in here with that type of situation, you have nobody running towards that threat to stop that threat from in this building. Um, given that, that scenario, I would want one person in this building at least to have that, that type of response to a person coming in here with an active shooter type situation. It's not from the outside.
You're, uh, three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, all right, Aaron Lehman?
Hi, I'm Aaron Lehman. I don't know if this is off. It's on. All right, it is, okay. Um, I just wanted to come in and I want to thank, uh, Mr. Heinrich because we, um, for those of you that know, um, or don't know, I'm with Family Promise. We're a homeless, uh, child care, if you will, facility that helps homeless families. And one of the things that I was really impressed with is the fact that Mr. Heinrich came, met with me. We got a really good conversation about how we can help homeless families in Indiana County and Indiana. Um, so I really appreciate that. I appreciate the, uh, a conversation and hopefully we can work together to make it so, you know, we can alleviate homelessness in our lifetime. So I just wanted to thank you for meeting with me and, uh, thank the board for having somebody that's so, um, you know, helpful with homeless families. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, SGA. You're up.
Hello, I'm Ronald Wang, the Student Government Association from the High School, um, representative, and I'm, uh, reporting on SGA and high schools events that occurred through March and April. SGA's blood drive was held on Thursday, March thirty, to conjunction with the American Red Cross, um, leading to the collection of twenty-seven units of blood. Um, SGA thanks students and members of the community for donating. Prom will be held on Saturday, May thirteenth, abroad the Gateway Clippers and Press in Pittsburgh, um, along with the grand march, which will be held, um, three-thirty until five P M. in the auditorium. You're cordially invited to attend the grand march afterwards. Students will be bused to Pittsburgh for the prom. In addition to SGA events, um, there have also been other high school events. Um, the student program, for example, um, in which seven high schools in Indiana County, along with ICTC honors senior. Um, this month, the April Student of the Month, it was, is Gabe Cannon, and March's Student Month was Liam Akonalti. Annual Minithon was held on March twenty-third. It's raised over forty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, Leadership Seminar thanks local businesses and individuals, as well as the school community for the generous donations to this cause. Um, IHS Digital Media Production Students were awarded for their photographic compositions at twenty-twenty-three Indiana Gazette NIE Newspapers in Education, uh, supplement. Honors were Iron Nederheiser, uh, Haley Rado and Brynlee Shaw. Student Av- Student Advisory Council Meeting was held on April fourteenth. March students worked on narrowing down the topics of greatest import, importance for our school and community. The next meeting will be on May fifth. Uh, Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA State Leadership Conference and State Competitions were held April seventeenth through nineteenth, um, at Hershey Lodge and Convention Center. IHS had thirty-four students participate. Throughout the year, IHS students participated in festivals sponsored by the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association, in which included several levels for band, chorus and orchestra. Um, seven students successfully auditioned for the PMEA State Conference. Those students were Nadia Goodyer for, um, State Band, uh, Emma Sheeran and Ronnie Wang for Orchestra. All-state chorus were Joseph Bonik, Maureen Epper, Sean Kelly and Sam Epper. Annual State Senator Joe Pittman Student Government Seminar will be held on, at the College Center this Thursday. IHS students will be joining students from around the area to learn more about state government from Senator Pittman, many other elected officials. Line, uh, Ivory and Mr. Perkovich continues to organize lunch and learn events for our students in which, uh, future careers will be discussed by, um, guests that are invited. If exams will be held May first through twelfth, and Keystone Exams will be held May fifteenth through May nineteenth. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, Rob, you're up. Superintendent's report.
Okay, sir, um, I just need to echo one thing that, um, gentlemen from Stico put it out, that the, uh, leadership students wrote a letter of thanks to the board for the, for the, for the support, uh, that they received from you and from community with Minithon. Um, they broke a record in Minithon for the amount of participants who actually came in and were at the event, which I think speaks volumes to the, uh, the culture that they're building at the high school. The students really, you know, uh, got together and, you know, because they believe in what they're doing. Um, we had a, a really nice moment when Ben Franklin teachers joined them and, uh, we have a, a young little third grader who's struggling with, uh, with cancer and her father got to speak and thanked the community for that, and it was a very powerful moment as well. So, so we had people from the elementary schools joining the people from the high schools that really turned into a community event, and it was very, very powerful. And they wrote a letter of thanks and wanted me to bring it to your attention, and I, I have it here and I'll, I'll send it around here in a little bit with a picture, but they did raise forty-six thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, uh, for the four diamond. Second thing I want to turn it over to Mr. Roan. Mr. Roan's done some tremendous work, uh, to solve a problem that we had in that district, and he got the KCAC Center approved to be a WIBIO playoff site, so.
Yeah, it's about time.
Yeah, and, uh, in conjunction with the rest of the, uh, with the WBAL, uh, staff, we officially got IUP as an approved site, uh, to host any of our indoor, uh, playoff events going forward. Um, the capacity is well over two thousand people. Um, so I think that's something that's gonna benefit us in the future, whenever we don't have to travel to a, um, a, an, a neutral site for any sort of playoff game. Um, so this is something that I think is gonna benefit us as a school district. Um, it's a very minimal cost for us to use any sort of, um, what I wanna say, facility over there. Um, so it's, it's, it's definitely a step in the right direction in a, in a relationship with IUP.
It's not just for the KCAC Center, though, is that correct?
Correct. It is for the Memorial, Memorial Fieldhouse as well. Yep, and then we also have, uh, already in place a contract with them to use their outdoor facilities, baseball, softball and tennis courts.
So is it for basketball?
Basketball, volleyball.
Whatever.
Whatever, yeah.
Gasoline.
Anytime we have any sort of a, uh, restriction that is hindering us by using our own home gym, we, we're able to shift it to, to IUP to use.
So the situation that occurred this year with the girls' basketball team won't occur again in the future.
It will never occur again.
I'd like to, um, thank Dan for moving on this. When this problem came up, he moved extremely quickly to try to get the, uh, the approval for the girls, for the girls to actually play in Indiana. Um, and, um, the WIBIO drug defeat, quite frankly, and, um, and prevented that from happening. Here we have a community facility that seats thousands of people, and for some reason the WIBIO sought fit not to approve it for that beginning of the game. We were not aware, none of us were aware that, that the five-A girls um, requirements had exceeded our jump. The four-A did not, the three-A, the original three-A did not. Um, and Dan moved heaven and earth to get it done, and the WIBIO screwed it up. So, and it was very disappointing for Indiana to have a playoff game that we should have held hosted here due to the bureaucracy.
And I think going forward, we shouldn't have any, any sort of issues regarding those, um, those issues anymore.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you for the work, Dan. And one more, uh, little note on Mr. Roan. He was just nominated for a national award, uh, for Athletic Director of the Year by one of our partners. So he had to, uh, he was nominated, he had to write an essay, and he is a finalist, one of the finalists for the national award. So, uh, congratulations, Dan.
And, and he would have gotten it had he gotten the girls' basketball team.
That was the one deciding factor, yes, sir. Um, one last, uh, note, I just wanna make sure that everyone's aware that our summer camp is occurring again this year in partnership with Twenty-First Century Learning Centers. Um, in Aaron IU twenty-eight, we are gonna be able to offer some sort of summer camp in perpetuity here, it seems like, or at least for the next several years. It might look a little different because of the funding source and the rules that have to happen. I've sent a letter out to the, to the families that posted on certain, uh, situations, but I wanna make sure that the public was aware that you can register your children for summer camp grades. They have to have finished kindergarten, new rule, uh, because of the grant, and they can be up to finishing eighth grade to participate this year. We used to have to, we used to run pre-K to five. Now we're running finished kindergarten to finishing eighth grade because of the, uh, the rules of the grant. So you can register for that online. Um, uh, there's a, some social media links about it as well. Um, and finally, thanks, sir. We're gonna skip ahead to the presentation, but, um, you all received an invitation today from us to attend the Excellence in Education Award at the KCAC Center on May the eighth, which is two Monday nights from now. Um, we've canceled the, the committee meetings and the board meeting that night so that we can, we can attend that event to recognize some, you know, some students and some tremendous teachers from our district who have been nominated for the award. The Excellence in Education Award is sponsored by, uh, Mr. CJ Spatafora and his folks at Colonial, who have stepped up and made a tremendous, uh, donation to all the schools in Indiana County who can participate in this. All seven schools in Indiana County and the ICTC were asked to nominate people who really embodied excellence in education. And anyone can make a nomination. Students could nominate teachers, teachers could nominate other teachers, administrators could nominate teachers, family members, community members, and we had nine teachers nominated for this award. And I just wanna say, I mean, we say thank you a thousand times a day. Um, but really, we never get a chance to really say thank you, you know? Um, it's one of those things that's almost you take for granted, but being a teacher is a tough, tough job. It's a really challenging profession. It's a challenging profession to do well. And there's a lot of teachers in this district and other districts who overcome those challenges and do a great job. But this group of teachers did that so well that someone took notice of what they did and took notice of their positive attitude and the way that they, you know, they put it all out there for their kids every day. They go above and beyond. So that's tremendous. And, uh, so thank you, honestly, from all of us. So I wanted to take a minute to, to recognize them all here publicly, and I hope that, um, you and the rest of the community will be there on May eighth to, uh, to cheer them on. So I'm gonna call your name here and, um, if you take your certificate. Is Ms. Dawn Davies here? If you, I think we're gonna get a picture. Natalie Dex. Mr. Diking, James Diking. Sir, thank you. Ms. Heidi Hippie. Ms. Sarah Jordan. Mr. Sean Moran. Ms. Angela Petrov. And Dr. Nate Wharton.
Thank you.
Just one more note on this. So all of these teachers were nominated. Then there was a committee that got to choose one of these teachers to be a finalist in Indiana County. So all seven school districts and the ICTC get to nominate a finalist. The finalist, uh, will, one of the, one of the eight finalists will be chosen, uh, by that committee to actually win the grand prize, which is a brand-new car. Um, so, uh, again, donated by the, you know, generous Spatafora family. Um, also, one of our students who will recognize at the next board meeting after we say, Aaron, who, who wins. Um, one of those finalists will win a car as well. We have about fifteen students, eighteen students who have been nominated as well. Our finalist is Mr. Sean Moran from Ben Franklin. And I will, I will tell you, although it was a very great type, you know, discussion, and there were several teachers that, uh, you know, were really, really in the mix, it really came down to Ms. Moran's, um, dedication, not only in the classroom, but outside the classroom, where he has conceptualized, fundraised for, developed, planned and built with his bare hands that outdoor classroom at Ben Franklin. So, uh, his tremendous work and, and his work to motivate and, and, uh, get others involved in the process has been tremendous, and that's really what, what set him apart with the committee. So congratulations and we wish you luck, sir. Thank you. Hopefully Josh wants to get a picture here. So before you run off, I don't know if you wanna, if you guys want the.
No, you recognize all the students here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, yeah, yes. So. Okay, yes.
Yes, we would love to take.
Sorry, my apologies. So. You wanna do that now or later?
Yeah, let us take care of it. I bet you will. I hope so.
So, the board member who's getting the card is, uh.
And not gonna get this one, but they didn't, you know.
Oh, it's all right. Crazy is, isn't always recognized, I understand. Oh, out this way.
You too, sir.
You're holding.
Great job. Thanks. Thank you. Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry.
Katie. Katie. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, I wasn't prepared for class. Well, we know she's not getting attention.
So we'll take care of a few of the perfunctory things. There is no solicitor's report. Uh, we did have the presentation here this evening. Um, may I have a motion to approve the minutes and agenda?
Seven.
Move to second. Questions, comments or discussion on the agenda, or minutes and agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, tomorrow is the JOC meeting for, uh, the ICTC, so I have no report this evening, but I will at the next meeting. Sue, has there been anything going on over there?
Yeah, I have no report. I was not able to attend, but I know, I believe, Mr. Kerr and Ms. Brode and Marky went to the dinner the other night, so I don't know if any of them have anything to report.
Yeah, could we have a little report on the dinner from?
It was delicious.
It was delicious. Homemade by the staff there. It was very good. They don't, they, they're, they have an ag areas that we also got to take home, uh, basil, rosemary and parsley. They had jars in, in a wooden thing that they made in the wood shop with the Indiana emblem on it and everything. They did a nice job. Good. Good. And Jared was there. Jared was there and Rob was there. So good. Anything going on in outreach, Tim?
No, we're not having a meeting again until May.
Okay. So, um, no, 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 no. I think we'll wait till, till the rest of, while we got the preliminary out of the road.
Let's have. You let me, um.
You wanna give your report then? Or do you wanna wait?
Might as well.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, meeting on the seventeenth. In order of the year, um, we reviewed the PATAA internship grant, which is an, um, annual thing. Um, and, uh, many of you, um, recommend that to the board. And it's, and it's from, it's an unusual one. It's a life-scale group, um, from the high school wants to do a camping trip to Camp Alligator. They have raised the money from the coffee, from Saladin. So the only thing that we're responsible for is paying for substitute teachers. It's, um, I think it was nineteen out of twenty-one students were going, um, and there are eggs and I think, uh, three teachers are going to this camping trip overnight, and the students, the students met and decided what it was they wanted to spend the night. Um, and I think this is a wonderful thing. In the past, they've gone to Hershey, they've done something like this, but this is, I'll, this is an overnight camping trip. So, um, the committee recommends it highly. Uh, we had a presentation from Mr. Larry Cadill about, um, instituting an archery program in the, in the PE program. Um, and, um, as near as I could tell, about, uh, ninety percent of the funds were coming from outside. We are very responsible for about a thousand dollars worth of equipment. Um, and they would work that in, they'd work archery into the PE program. There's some long-term, long-term goals where it becomes an after-school activity and perhaps a, you know, varsity activity. Um, we, the committee recommended to support that. We had a, um, CKLA, which is?
Uh, Core Knowledge Language Arts Program.
I love this stuff. And, um, we had a, we had a long discussion on that, um, with teachers during the presentation, showing the data, um, showing the counter data. The, um, we're anxious to see what the, what the end-of-the-year data looks like, um, before we make the final commitment, but it looks, it looks, it looks encouraging. Um, and the, uh, the teachers were certainly enthusiastic. It was wonderful to see how much effort they put in to teaching these kids to read. We also had a, uh, spring math renewal, uh, recommendation by, by Rob. Do you wanna say anything about that?
Spring math is a tier-one, um, method. Eventually that means that all students get it. It's designed to develop math fluency. So just like we teach students to be fluent in reading, this program helps them become fluent in math. And, uh, we've seen some pretty incredible data from that. We're hoping that that translates to improved scores on the PSSAs and improved student success throughout the year.
Okay, um, we had a request to renew the Brain Era Si- um, system, which is the, um, the system that Rob uses to communicate with our faculty, with our staff, practice and family and our students. Um, it's a reasonable cost. Uh, we've been paying for it, uh, in the past, and we'd like to continue that. The committee recommends moving forward with that. Um, we're dissatisfied with training our teachers, and so we're gonna send six of the principals off to offer residual training at Forest Hills. Um, and, um, that's really not what it was about. So, Rob, why don't you actually say?
Uh, some of the principals are often overlooked, sort of by, uh, you know, we don't have a whole lot of great professional talent for principals, so. We work with the Pennsylvania Principals Association. They offer a simulation trainer, uh, where they will work principals through, um, actual simulations that they may encounter, and then the other principals get to observe, and then they get to debrief on the situation and talk about what they did well, what they could have done better, what they maybe, how they might have approached differently. So we're pretty excited about it. We'll partner with, uh, five different school districts to keep the cost down. Um, so we're, we're excited to see where that will, that will go.
And that, that'll take care of six of our principals. Um, at the same time, we say that this is a budgeted item. It just needs to have the approval of the board. The committee recommends it. At the same time, we say that this is a budgeted item. It just needs to have the approval of the board. The committee recommends it. We were asked to participate in the twenty-three, twenty-four P survey, which, um, is six, eight, ten, and twelve grades.
Pennsylvania Youth Survey. They look at, um, student situations socially and emotionally and, uh, look at mental health. It's where we use a lot of the data that comes from the Pennsylvania Youth Survey to drive a lot of our initiatives and our decisions, so.
That happens every.
Every two years in grade six, eight, and twelve.
The committee recommend, recommends supporting it. We had a data presentation that we postponed for future date. We had a long presentation from the school psychologists, um, the MTS program, which is.
Multi-tiered systems of support.
Thank you. And, um, again, the amount of effort that the district has done on the mental health side in the last few years is tremendous. And these, these, um, these faculty members have just been awesome. The system that they've built, the early interventions, the, um, the ability to get involved with the students in their health, when they need help, and the system is there. So, um, we were, um, we want to be, we want you folks to share the, share the good work we're doing. We've, this, this board has taken mental health seriously, um, for more than five years now. And, uh, the amount of professionals that we have in the buildings has expanded exponentially. That's, uh, that's my report, sir.
Tom, before you, before you move on, the discussion with the CKLA, I believe that was a preliminary discussion where the teachers were wanting to take the pilot program that we are currently running and expand it beyond the pilot. Rob, can you? Yes, sir. Kind of cover that? There are twelve pilot teachers that took part, plus two reading specialists that got a vote in this. They voted.
At the, at the elementary level.
At the elementary level, yeah. This is grades K through two now, so. Um, and they, it's, twelve of those teachers are voting to say, look, we'd like to move this forward to core curriculum, and then move the current program. We have a core to our winning time, which is what I need time as an intervention. So they have some work to do. They're actually meeting with their team members this week, last week, and in the coming weeks to talk to them about it. If they get, um, the majority of support from the teachers and they, they convince those teachers they're right, then we're going to bring it back to you for approval for that.
It's in about half the classrooms right now in those grades, um, and the other half are running the, the old program.
Correct.
And it looked like it was successful in the older grades, not so successful in the younger grades. But again, it's a, um, the data was from only a few months of effort.
Correct.
So we expect to see, um, end-of-year data that will be more, more reliable.
Okay.
So, um, I would like to make all my motions if I could. Is there anything I need to do? Five, five. Are you okay with five, five thirteen? So I will make a motion that the board approves, five-two, five-three, five-four, five-six, five-seven, five-eight, five-nine, five-ten, five-eleven, five-twelve, and five-thirteen.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved in second to, uh, to approve motions five-two through five-thirteen, excluding five-five. Questions, comments, or discussion on any of these motions?
Question or comment on five-eight, the archery program? Are our phys ed instructors certified to teach, like, gun and art, and archery safety? And really don't need an answer tonight, but it's something I thought of after that year meeting, Tom, was the game commission has certified instructors, and I don't know if that would fit into our phys ed program.
I'm assuming that they will get that certification as part of this program if they don't already have it. There was no, this, this would not include any rifle. This is only.
I know, but I'm asking about both right now.
I can check on the rifles, sir, but I do know that Mr. Cadill, through part of this, what he, what he wanted to prove tonight empowers him to go work with the, uh, the organization that does that. So he's going to get, they're going to get the proper safety training they need to bring in. So absolutely, good question. I can report back on the gun. Okay, any other questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carry.
We gotta do five-five. I move the DEP speech and language cooperative agreement to be approved as written.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussions on that? I'll just say that Dr. Lombard and Dr. Cadill have done outstanding work. It's a great partnership. It's shown tremendous results with all those learners. Uh, they're really making significant growth, uh, so we, we definitely support this agreement.
I'd like to congratulate the administration to make this thing happen from our side. These people have been there for a long time, and bringing them into our, our district is a boon to all of us, sir.
Okay, and you'll abstain then?
Yes, I need to abstain because of my role that I.
Okay, fair enough. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, no one abstention. Cindy, walls and personnel.
Okay, I have no committee meeting report because it was canceled, uh, the last time for, I don't remember, Eisenhower issues, I believe. And the next one in May is going to be canceled also, so we won't be meeting until June.
Okay.
I'd like to take all of the motions as consent. Six-point-two is the nurse substitute list. We approve that as presented. Six-point-three is resignation of Mona Weimer, a paraeducator, and a, uh, that's due to retirement, a re, a letter of resignation from Ashley Barker due to relocation. Two requests for leave of absence, one of them being a sabbatical. And the final one is a grievance denial of a legal day as a result of a hearing held this evening. So we do those as consent.
Okay. Second, second on that. Uh, but to be clear, your, your motion is to deny the grievance?
The grievance, yes. I A D A grievance twenty-two, twenty-three, dash, oh, one, denial of a legal day be denied as a result of the hearing held this evening.
Okay. Questions, comments, or discussion on six-two through six-five? Nothing hurt? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carry. Carrie, building grounds?
Sure. The committee meeting report, it was opened and closed within like thirty seconds. Nothing discussed. Seven-point-two, the elementary update on Eisenhower. U. Cardhorn is still proceeding along with design development. Or, no, they're into, yes. Yes. They're into construction document phase now. The Act Thirty-four hearing is May first at?
Six-thirty PM at the junior period high.
I thought senior.
No, the junior high, like, the meet, the candidates is at the senior high. That's, that's another thing.
I put it in the wrong building again.
Yeah. And then we will have a building and grounds meeting coming up here next. Next Monday. Yeah. There'll be some stuff on there about Eisenhower.
No.
Two weeks, maybe.
Federal.
The building and grounds, May fifteenth, five-thirty.
Is that another thing? Oh, no, you're talking about a meeting.
Yeah. Uh, moving on to the.
Carrie, just, just one quick comment on, on the Act Thirty-four hearing. I would encourage everyone in the community to, to come out, uh, to hear the presentation. And if they have any, uh, you know, comments or would like to contribute to that, um, dissertation there, I certainly would appreciate, um, um, doing so. And again, encourage the public to come out, because that's the real purpose of the, of this hearing, is to be sure that the public, um, has the project explained to them and understands what the board is about to take action on.
Say the date and time and location one more time.
Okay, it's May the first, which is a week from today. And it's? Six-thirty PM at the Indiana Area Junior High School auditorium.
Well, you have the front door, because I walked around trying to get into that thing on Tuesday night all over the place, by the way.
Yeah, it's a good question. The front doors will definitely be open, but the, uh, maybe we could have somebody stationed down at the side doors, let some people in.
Well, at least the front door for that side, yeah.
Yeah. We can figure something out. Make it a little more accessible for the public. For those that, that don't know, as soon as you walk through the front doors, you walk into the lobby, the auditorium is immediately on the other side of the lobby from the front doors. So hopefully they won't have to wander too far.
There are, there is a ramp also.
Correct. Okay.
I walked around Marion Center to get in the air, like, three times around that building before. How do I get in?
Okay, Terry.
Okay, I'm going to take mine separate tonight. Aaron IU twenty-eight Transportation Consortium. That the board approves the transportation service consortium agreement with Aaron IU twenty-eight through the school years twenty-three through twenty-eight as presented.
Okay, moved in second. Jared, would you like to, you know, kind of explain what this is?
Our participation in this is mainly for our special needs transportation, where we can work with other districts who may be sending students outside of, uh, their borders, but our borders, where we can maybe team up, um, to have one or two kids ride in a van that are going to the same location of, for instance, Purchase Line is sending a kid and they're driving through Indiana School District already. They may be able to pick up one of our students. So this just allows our participation in that partnership.
More effective utilization of the resources.
Yeah, more effective financially, uh, a bonus for us as well.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next two motions, especially the next one, is a bit intentionally general. There's a reason why we don't talk about certain safety and security topics out in the public. We don't want the bad actors to know certain things. So, seven-point-four, security enhancements. In pursuant to the recent safety audit, the board approves the top security enhancements as presented by the safety consultant and empowers the administration to take action to implement the recommendations. Individual upgrades and/or items will be brought to the board for approval.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on seven-point-four? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay, seven-point-five, armed security guards. That the board authorizes the administration to work with Bramlett Enterprises LLC to hire three additional full-time armed security guards to serve the district at an estimated cost of a hundred and sixty-five thousand per year, prorated for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school years based on actual days' work.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on this one?
I want to start off and say I am going to approve this, but I do want the public to know that there are layers of security already in our schools that nobody is able to talk about because we don't want, as Terry says, the bad actors to know. There's a feeling in the community that having armed security guards, um, will help us with the security of the students. I just want everybody to be certain that they don't get a false sense of security because of these guards. There are situations where guards will help us gain precious seconds in time to allow the children and the teachers to get themselves to safety. But it's not a guarantee, and it never can be a guarantee. But, um, it's something that I feel that we definitely need to do.
My, my only other comment, too, is that the board and the administration realizes that this is a, uh, area where we're not going to rest on our heels. We're going to, you know, we have a safety consultant on board. We have for years. They constantly evaluate our buildings and grounds, and, and we have discussions, and they do audits every year. You know, we, we will continue to do that, and we're going to continue to make other layered enhancements and improvements throughout the building and grounds.
Tom?
Yes, educating our kids in the Indiana district is our primary focus, no question. And we're going to be spending the equivalent of three teachers in order to provide these security guards. The community owes the schools the safety. We should not be in the business of providing police forces. This, what the Harrisburg has done to us, and Washington has done to us, and especially the rural communities, is providing security for buildings and, and, and we can't have guns and butter. So when, when a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars plus a hundred and, a hundred and twenty thousand that we're spending on security guards is spent for that kind of activity, that means that an English teacher isn't hired. That means that a specialist isn't hired. That money all comes out of our, our tax base, our, our property tax base. I call on Harrisburg and Washington to step up and change, change the dialogue here. Where the school districts go back to providing educational requirements and, and, and the society and the community provides security. We are, we are now doing, in this community, we are now doing, um, um, active shooter drills in our churches. This is, this is intolerable. And I'm going to vote against it strictly, symbolically. And I, and we will, we'll provide these people, but it should not be up to the school districts to provide this type of security. And I say that across the board. I, I worry about the communities, the schools that don't have an Indiana borough or a state police barracks ten minutes away. This, this county is vulnerable, and one security guard is not going to save some of these school districts. And I'm just, I'm, I'm, enough's enough.
Oh, I agree with you. In an ideal world, somebody else would pay for it, but these kids are our responsibility right now, and I think we need to support it. I'm all for looking for grant money, for looking for other ways to pay for it, but for now, it's our responsibility.
And what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that, is that if, if, that, that Harrisburg should step up and provide these funds. This is an unfunded mandate.
I agree.
That, that, that falls on the local school boards, and some are not in, in the shape we are, okay? And some have much more difficulty time providing this security. And yet, yet, you know, we're going to be, this is, this is the beginning, and, and Harrisburg will just keep on doing what they do.
I believe, Tom, that after the, uh, shooting in Tennessee, they at least started the process where the state would fund an SRO for each of the school buildings in the.
In Tennessee? Not here.
I know, I understand that.
Okay, not here.
But that's the point you're making, is that the state should step up and fund the SROs for each of the, each of the buildings, um, throughout the Commonwealth. That's, that's essentially the argument.
Walt. So, this is our community. Harrisburg doesn't have any money. That's our money, too. Why does it matter? Our community needs to step up and provide safety for our students, and that's what we're doing with this vote.
And, and, and I agree.
Harrisburg does have money.
We are, my point.
Harrisburg's money comes from taxpayer money.
Yeah, but it's on, it's, it's a distribution.
It comes from gambling money. It comes from revenue provided by the state. We are the state. We're the community. What, we're not passing the buck. We're taking care of a problem that needs to be addressed.
I think it would be better set with the, with the state taxpayers as a, as, as the governor or the governor wrote a portion, but there is a good pot of money in Harrisburg for security at this point. I think they're waiting to figure out, to get the budget through. But, um, it's, it's difficult for districts that aren't A-rated districts on their bonds to afford all of this because it comes out of our, our communities, you know, Lancaster County is growing, York is growing, and we're not. We're going, you know, we, we've taken, what was the number, Jared, that we've lost in a million dollars or, you know, so. You know, it's hard, and, and we're going to have to make some. some tough choices here.
Ron Earhart raised his hand.
Thank you, Walter. I'm going to support this. I don't think we can wait for the state or the federal or anybody else to do this. I hope by putting three officers in there, we never have to worry whether it worked or didn't work. I just hope we never have to worry about that. I hope it's like an insurance policy. I hope we never have to use or to rely on it, but I am in support of it.
So from my perspective, I feel much like Tom, but the question comes down to, for me, I, I'm not so sure that the, that the SRO is the, is the end all, be all in some sort of an active shooter case. But for me, the question is, if we don't do it and something happens, then what do we say? And, and I think that's the deciding factor in my case. Anybody else? Jared, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Tammy Blank?
Yes.
Cindy Broad?
Yes.
Julia Chmarkey-Cucure?
Yes.
Mr. Harley?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Dr. Rig?
Yes.
Dr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Schub?
Yes.
Mr. Passes nine zero.
Okay. Julia, Audit and Finance?
Thank you. We did have a meeting tonight. We, we, there's a couple, this was the key handout for people. It's on the website, Indiana Area School District Budget Update for April 24th of 2023. One quick correction, we are going to refine that other item you put at the end of this for other under 2023, 24 revenues for insurance proceeds. There's been some, there seems to have been a misunderstanding in the community that, that we have settled the Eisenhower claim, but we haven't. We've already taken in a certain, a certain amount of money, but it's not, it's, it's not, it's mistaken to think that it's over. So that's, that will be, we'll add a note to that effect. Some other, we, we talked a lot about the options that we have relative to the deficit that Jared has pointed out. We're comfortable, I think as a board living with, you know, two million in the general fund, but he's projecting a $4 million deficit. I don't know if we'll actually ever get there, but, you know, we're going to have to start looking carefully at charter schools. We talked about that and trying to find other options in all different sorts of programs to sort of scrubbing the budget to see, I think Mr. Kerr said he's a member of the committee, you know, what we can keep, what we can cut. My point as a committee member is we just try to not to let things get too much more expensive that we hold the line at this point. We talked about the possibility of raising taxes. I'm not sure if we're going to do that. We hope not to, but it was certainly something we discussed tonight. So I urge you to go onto the YouTube video and hear what we had to say. The night, what we're hoping for, which would help a lot, Jared, and you can explain this, is we're hoping that the governor gives us, he's proposed with this new budget about a 900, is it, how much are we expecting, 900,000 overall if we get everything?
Well, about $900,000 increase in basic ed and then about another 150 in special ed. But that's not what's in the budget.
Yeah. You discounted it because it rarely happens, but I'm not so sure. The, the situation in Harrisburg has changed, so we'll have to wait and see about that. Charter schools, a, a number of us attended the seminar that was conducted by an outside firm about charter schools and it wasn't so much about choice. That's not what it was about. It was about how we pay for it and to remind the public that the charter school students, and we have about 80, cyber school?
That would probably be an average.
Yeah. And, and so the local taxpayers pay for that and that number has really escalated. So I see it as a, the, the numbers as a risk to the district that we have to keep our eye on. So that's pretty much what our discussion was about. Jared, do you want to add anything that you had in your report?
No, no.
Okay.
One question I do have on the committee. When, if we are going to raise taxes, is there a deadline for the, related to the budget or anything?
It would be when you approve your final budget. So-
We could wait till then. Okay.
And you don't know, we may get more than he's projecting in the budget on the state subsidy. So I, I'm not so sure, but we, we do see a decline in our tax base and you discussed that. So we're, we're down about a million dollars in taxes, which hurts. So this was unexpected. It's not unexpected from a population point of view, but, but in comparison to other districts who are growing, we're not. So, you know, we have to be a little smarter than everybody else and figure out how we're going to pay for the things we need, not just safety and security, but the reading programs, the summer camps, all the things that we're doing and we're very proud of. We also have a motion on the table tonight for a beautiful donation. So if there's no more questions or any more comments, Jared, that you want to move?
I'm ready.
Okay. Then I'm going to move that the board accepts the donation of $5,000 from Mark Arbuckle Nissan to be used by the science club.
Moved in second for the donation?
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Questions, comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. We're down to item nine, closing. There are no discussion items. Is there any public comment on agenda items? Once, twice, thrice? Okay. We had some enclosures this evening. We had an executive session prior to the board meeting where we discussed labor relation, issue, safety and personnel matters. Our next board meeting will be May the 22nd at 7:00 PM for general purposes. Please note that the May eighth meeting has been changed to that on the 22nd. Again, the Act 34 hearing, 6:30 next Monday night. May 15th, we'll have Buildings and Grounds with Terry and Audit and Finance again on May the 22nd. We have a motion to adjourn. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.